Good evening. I'd like to call the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee for October 8th to order. We could all say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with justice.
Thank you. And we'll start with introduction of members, please.
Aralakken Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Carrie Godette, Blackstone.
Jack Keith, Blackstone.
Erin Vernon, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Erin Vinaco, Millville. Jason.
Oh, I didn't know if Jane was going, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll go at the end.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Matt Aaronworth, Assistant Superintendent. I apologize, I paused for Jane when I saw her.
That's okay. I'm Jane Reggio, Millville.
Thank you. And first item is Consent Agenda A. We have warrants minutes of meeting for September 24th. Just looking for a motion unless someone wants to split those.
So moved.
I have no idea who that was.
It was Tammy.
It was Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy. So motion made by Tammy, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion for Consent Agenda A? Okay, all those in favor of Consent Agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, Erin, I'm all set, thank you. Thank you very much for starting the meeting for us. Jessie, are there any people who have some things they'd like to share with us?
I don't see anybody.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to the school committee portion of our agenda. And Sarah, would you like to give us a regional agreement update?
Sure. So last, oh, was it last Saturday? It's been a long week. We had, well, it was Millville Special Town Meeting, and we had the vote regarding the changes to the regional agreement, and it was nearly unanimous in affirming it. So now it goes on to Blackstone. Blackstone has set its date for special town meeting for November 14th, correct?
Yes, correct, at 10:00 AM.
Okay, I keep getting it wrong. So November 14th, that's a Saturday at 10:00 AM. And it's at the high school.
Yes, most likely in the auditorium. And with overflow into the cafeteria, because everybody will be socially distanced, but November 14th, probably chilly.
Brisk, but refreshing. So that's how we're gonna look at it today. That's all I have.
Okay. So we had tasked Dr. DeFalco back in the summer to negotiate with Unit A for any adjustments to the contract for reopening the school under COVID-19 terms. And he has done that, so we need to approve the memo of understanding, memo of agreement with the Unit A. You should have received a copy in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve those adjustments and additions.
So moved.
Moved by Erin. Is there a second? Second in by Tara. Is there any discussion? Dr. DeFalco, do you have any comments?
I just want to thank the team that helped to negotiate this and get this done. Jane, I know you and Matt, Jill, Jenny, we spent, you know, hours upon hours on this. And also, you know, again, just a big thank you to the Unit A leadership. They, you know, it's odd not having seen them this week, because it's the first time since, you know, probably July or June, if not before then, we haven't spent a bunch of time with them each week. So to try and get the right systems and structures in place. So a thank you to them as well. I'm glad that this piece is where it needs to be for now, right? And because we don't know what things will look like moving forward, but we're happy it's in place. So thanks to everybody for their hard work.
Tammy, go ahead.
I just, the personal protective equipment, PPE, social distancing and personal hygiene, lists, you know, a bunch of things that the district is responsible to carry out. And I was just hoping to get an update on, are we in good shape with that? Are there things we have to follow up in order to comply with this Section C? And, you know, to that end, just making sure we're in good shape there.
Sure. Matt, do you want to, do you want to share some of the specifics?
Sure. As of right now, we are in very good shape with respect to PPE. We have everything that we should have. We've distributed the majority of it to the people that need it. I was gonna say Karen could probably speak more specifically to who got what, but I can assure you that everything that we've told people that they're going to get, they have gotten. And we're at a place now where we've been tracking what's being used so we can try to make sure that we're staying ahead of it as the year progresses. The work on the HVAC system was one of the biggest things that was a priority. Filters have been changed. All of the systems have been updated to ensure maximum circulation of fresh air. They're all functioning, all exhaust fans are functioning. The last thing that is still underway is the HVAC duct work at the high school is still, they're finalizing the cleaning. But that does not really impact COVID, it's just making the, it's making the air fresher and better to be breathing in, just in general, but it shouldn't impact anything with respect to the virus. And we just recently submitted reports to the union regarding the air quality assessments in each one of the buildings. So we had an independent third-party air quality assessment done, and they all came back positive, and there were no problems in any of the buildings, and those were submitted to the union leadership. So we are in very good shape.
Air quality assessments being positive, that means they were good, not in terms of...
Yeah. We positively have air.
The air quality, the air quality assessments showed what they would have expected to show.
There you go. Thank you. Any other, any other questions or comments or concerns?
Is there a mechanism in place for people to get refills? So I'm just speaking from my personal experience in my district right now. There are, you know, administration is saying they're full, but people are saying, no, I don't have this or that. Is there a mechanism that they can request refills of spray or wipes or masks or whatever? And who is helping with that? Who are they contacting?
Karen, do you want to answer that?
Not, I'm assuming that for the cleaning supplies, it would be the custodians. But for the gloves and masks, that would be the nurses are handling that. In each one.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I do have some backup supplies that have not been distributed yet. So if we do have someone that, you know, all of a sudden tomorrow says, I'm completely out of gloves, which they shouldn't be, then I can get some over to them and get more reordered.
I just want to make sure teachers know where to go to make themselves feel safer in, in the school day. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing. All those in favor of approving the MOA with Unit A, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay. There was also discussion with Unit A regarding the coordinate, 504 Coordinator stipend. Originally had been a stipend position in the contract, and then last year we changed that a little bit. And so we came to an agreement. You should have a copy of that on page, sorry, 10, I think, yes, page 10 of your packet that you received. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Excuse me, Jane, is this per building? School, school-based, yes. So each building has a, and is the complex is one person or two? Are we treating that as one now? Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Erin. Is there a second?
Second, Tammy.
Second by Tammy. And Tammy, any more questions?
No, I just know that was a big conversation at one point in our lives.
It was. Dr. DeFalco, do you have any comments about this?
Yeah, I think the gist of this was, and you'll, you can see in the language, that we really want the the clinical side or the guidance counselor side, adjustment counselor side of the staff to, to take on this work. And you'll notice that, that language is in there, but of course, if there's a situation where we have a school where either the guidance or adjustment counselor, you know, doesn't want to take that on, we certainly can have another Unit A member do that, but they'll have to go through very thorough training with the district coordinator, who's Dr. Jan Laporte. And you'll also notice that the gist of it is the $35 an hour rate, which is the contractual rate, but for time outside of the school day. And so I think that's an important piece to mention, as well as that, you know, it, it looks about two hours to kind of take a whole process from kind of starting point to finish point per, per case. But there is a provision in the language that if the coordinator needs a little bit more time, they can go to the district coordinator, Dr. Laporte, and ask, you know, for a little additional time, another hour, what have you, to help get, to get everything in place for that student. So that's important to mention. And the last piece is equity. You know, I think right now the stipend as it stands is $2,400, you know, dollars or something along those lines. And that's per coordinator, but we have to keep in mind, you know, Millville has 13. The high school has 32. And under the old language, that's the same stipend. So, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were providing equity for the folks who are actually doing the work, but putting up guardrails as well. So we're happy to get this piece in place and be able to move forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Move to accept the 504 Coordinator Agreement with Unit A. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstention? Okay, all set. At this point, I will turn it over to Dr. DeFalco and I believe Erin for his report.
Thanks, Ms. Reggio. Jessie, can you give me up, access to share my screen? I see, oh, no, did you see it? I'm sorry, I got it. All right, bear with me once. Nope. Hang on. You have to enable the access, Jessie, so I can do that. If you wouldn't mind. Uh, let's see. All right, here we go. Okay, give me one minute. Let's see if this queues up. All right. Want to make sure that our folks at home can see this okay. All right. Is this clear?
To me it is.
Okay, all right, great. So this evening, we're gonna spend some time talking a little bit about my goals for the current school year, 2020, 2021. But before I launch into sharing out some of our initial thinking around where my work will lie this year, of course, pending approval of the committee, I do want to thank Erin Vinaco. Ms. Vinaco spent a lot of time, sadly for her, but a lot of time with me, and I'm very grateful for that. Really helping me kind of narrow the focus of the work for this year. Because whether we are in a pandemic or not, the work goes on. And we are still very much focused, of course, in keeping the health and safety of our students and staff and community at the forefront, but also we have district improvement work to do. And that certainly isn't something that we want to put on pause or take a break as we continue to navigate through our pandemic and the situation that we've been facing since March. So with that, I just want to, again, thanks, Ms. Vinaco, for all of her time, effort and energy. I know there was a lot of work on her part spent in kind of reviewing these and giving me feedback on a couple of different occasions. So Erin, I don't know if there's anything you want to add before I jump into these?
Um, no, I think it's good. I appreciated the committee's feedback too. And I think it gave us, you know, a great place to start with what you'll focus on this year.
Yeah, and I think it's important because, and I want the community really to hear that, you know, I certainly didn't sit in an office on my own and kind of come up with these, you know, concepts and ideas, but the committee did give direct feedback on, you know, making sure that I had the right focus. So again, I really, really appreciate that. So as we walk through our goals, my goals this evening, of course, we always start with our district improvement strategy, because as I mentioned, regardless of where we are in the pandemic, there's a lot of work to do to make sure that we are fulfilling our purpose. And we are really clear that these four areas are going to lead to improved student outcomes. We're still staying focused on our what, our how, our whole child and our, in our community. And yep, it might look a little different, it might be at a little different pace. We may be focusing in on fewer things or stretching timelines for work that we, you know, initially weren't planning on. But I think that's okay, because we do need to take into account the ongoing kind of day-to-day work. And because it is significant, you know, just, just kind of moving through the everyday. I think for everybody in all of our, you know, kind of professional and personal lives, things are just moving slower to a certain extent. It's taking, you know, there's a lot of layers to all the kind of the transactional things that weren't necessarily always there. So I hope that the committee sees a healthy balance this evening of our focus on our district improvement strategy, but also setting goals that are realistic and that are attainable, given the current climate and culture that we are in. So as we are kind of moving through the discussion tonight, I hope the committee sees evidence of that. On Slide three, as you know, last year we focused in and did a pilot on the new Massachusetts Superintendent Evaluation System. And the idea here is that instead of being kind of focused on, I think there's 32 or 36 indicators, that we would actually look at a couple of key kind of pressure points or leverage points where I really need to put my focus. And one of the things that I really appreciated about my time with Ms. Vinaco this week was that we actually delved really deeply into these, and we looked at what makes the most sense for where we are during this current time, but also for what we're trying to move the system to as we continue to push forward in our, in our improvement work. And so I also know that the committee was able to give feedback on these areas as well. So I hope I got this right. But under the four standards for which I'm evaluated, there are a series of indicators, and these are the indicators that we looked at and identified with feedback from the committee and conversation from Erin and I that we thought would make the most sense for us to really put, for me to put a lot of time, effort and energy into. And so I just want to mention those briefly. The first, under instructional leadership, is, you know, the idea of student engagement. And the second area is meeting diverse needs. And so what I hope is that the committee will see that a lot of my goals as we move forward through the discussion tonight are anchored back to these. You'll see this concept or this idea of like, we have got to be relentlessly focused on keeping students engaged and plugged in during this, you know, kind of creative time, I guess, of teaching and learning, and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our, of our students. And I think the committee will hear evidence of some of that work tonight as we talk specifically about one of the resets that we've done in grades four and five. Under management and operations, I don't think we can be focusing on anything but these two things. Ensuring the social, emotional wellbeing of our, of our students and staff, and also the health and safety aspect of that. And, you know, I know that the committee is aware that these are two of the main goals that we had to reopening our schools. Right? That intellectual, the social, emotional, behavioral health of our kids and, and the health and safety of our school community, meaning students and staff. And so I think it just made sense that we actually looked very deeply at these two indicators, and I spend quite a bit of time on those. Our third area, family and community, again, student support and family support. I think we need to live in that space as a school system as we continue to move through the upcoming months. And, you know, our team has talked, the leadership team has talked a lot about, you know, don't get too comfortable, because things are probably gonna change as soon as we get comfortable. And so I think we're seeing that as we continue to shift and adjust how we're implementing our learning plans, our food service program, our athletics, our clubs and activities. I mean, we just continue to kind of shift and adjust to looking at individual classrooms and saying, you know what, I think we need to meet to talk about the remote kindergarten program, it's not really working the way that we want it to. Or I think we need to look at grades four and five hybrid, the remote part of that's not making sense. What do we do about the banned students when we need to get them indoors and it's getting cold out? How do we help them still practice? And, and I just, you know, I think we have to continue to think about how do we support our community? How do we keep athletics going? With all the various challenges that we have in the clubs and activities for as long as we can. You know, before things get cold and we have to go inside and change things again. So I think the idea of this family and student support is critically important. And then our fourth area around professional culture, I think these two pieces are key. Regardless of the situation we're in, we have to stay committed to high standards. We have to. You know, I think this school committee is well aware and has, has been standing right there doing the work as well in the, in the kind of, in the mindset of, how do we do this good, better, best? And how do we keep evolving to get better at what it is we're trying to do during this particular time? And so we don't want to come off of that focus. And of course, we've got to stay really focused on learning and just continuing specifically to adapt and change how we do things. As a matter of fact, our entire school system, our principals, our, and all of our instructional and support staff have a, a formal professional goal this year around getting stronger and better at remote learning. So that we're able to make sure that we can shift and adjust to that whenever we have to and do it really well. So just kind of an example of what that continuous learning looks like. And so now we've kind of set the table for those focus standards, and I hope you see evidence of those as we walk through each of the specific goals this evening. And I don't want to sit and read these to the community or the committee. And to those folks watching at home, I will be sending these out to everybody tomorrow, as I usually do. I want people to have these. They will be posted on our website. But I will make sure that our entire school community, all the teachers, support staff, administration and families have a copy of these goals. So I, you know, with that, I don't want to read necessarily through each one, but would rather just, you know, kind of touch on some of the highlights. So our first, my first goal around professional practice, you know, this is kind of a a very detailed way of saying, I need to be able to ensure that we are navigating this year. And doing so safely and effectively. And so with that, you'll notice here that managing this pandemic response is not a, yes, it falls on the, on the kind of shoulders of the superintendent, as it should, as the kind of leader of the system. But I do think it's important that folks understand that the decisions of, in the direction in which we're moving is a, is a significantly collaborative effort with a lot of different groups. So I listed them here from, of course, the school committee, our boards of health, the leadership team, so on and so forth. And you'll notice a couple of groups that are outside of Blackstone Millville that we lean on for things, my colleagues in other Blackstone Valley school districts, my colleagues in school systems across the state. As I am in my last year of the new superintendent program, we have had endless conversations from super, with superintendents from all, all different types of systems across the Commonwealth around how do we reopen and do so safely? And really help ensure that our two goals that are bolded and underlined here are being met. So again, I, you know, I hope that the community and the committee sees this goal anchored right back to those few indicators. The second goal is our first district improvement goal, which is really anchored in teaching and learning. And so this was something that I, I really, I, Erin really pushed my thinking on this, and I really appreciate that. And so you'll see under curriculum, we have two main areas of work this year. The first is the implementation of our new literacy program. And that really started in the spring. We never took our foot off that gas and continued with the staff development and support and making sure that teachers had all the materials and resources that they needed in their hands. And I have to tell you that going and visiting, I've been in every school at least once a week, some weeks more already. And it's actually pretty great to see the students and to see the staff interacting with our new literacy program. So, you know, just my, you know, hats off to the school committee for supporting this. I can tell you unequivocally, the staff are using this. They are using the platforms, the materials. They're using the hard copy anthologies, they're using the electronic versions. And so a big, you know, shout out and thank you to the committee, and also to our staff, our teachers. They're doing a really great job of the implementation phase of this, especially in our circumstances. The second area, as you know, mathematics is up for curriculum renewal this year, right? So if you remember the way we laid out our curriculum review and renewal process, we have a core curriculum area that we're looking at each year. We started with science. We did literacy last year, and we're looking at math this year. What I really like about the way that we're doing this is you're gonna see something a little bit different than you saw with science, and you're gonna see something a little bit different than you saw with literacy. And I think it's important to kind of underscore the why behind that. So with mathematics, we are looking at a different approach. We're looking at an approach that could span between 18 months to two years in terms of the overall process. Yes, part of that is because of the, of the current state that we're in. There are limitations that will be put on the process that we would like to use in terms of getting staff together, getting site visits out to see different programs in action. But another kind of nuance to this, which Erin really helped me see, which I appreciate, is the fact that we have a core program in place. And, you know, with literacy, we, we really didn't. And so we knew the work with literacy needed to be accelerated. The adaptation that we're looking at with math, and I've had a chance to process this with the coaches, our instructional coaches, and with the principals. And to the, you know, the whole leadership team as a whole felt that this adjustment made a lot of sense. And so what we're looking at doing for this year is essentially a full audit and self-study of our curriculum and from the core perspective, all the intervention materials and the RTI materials, all of our electronic materials, and really getting a deep and kind of broad and deep sense of what exactly are we using of the core resources that we have. So we want to start this year by doing a full review and audit. My sense is sometime in the spring, that will probably be done. And we will use the Johnson, the Johns Hopkins study as kind of a launch pad into that. If you remember, they gave us a lot of great feedback on curriculum. But we will be delving much, much deeper than that. And we will have a K-12 math curriculum review committee. We're still gonna work with Achievement Network, ANET. They really did an incredible job of helping us kind of shepherding us through the kind of shepherding us through the process with literacy. And actually Cory Hamner, who is the lead, she and I have been speaking quite a bit. And she shared with me that from her perspective, this model makes a lot of sense for us because we need to delve deeper into just what we're doing and what we're using with fidelity before we start looking at research in terms of what, you know, what the current research says about our programs and where we should be going next. So you'll see here that the goal is for us to complete the self study and the self evaluation this year. And that by the end of next year, which would be the next, the following school year, we will have selected, you know, either a program or sticking with what we have and looking at some additional resources and materials that we might need to supplement. We're not sure yet. But so and I do want to share with the committee a lesson learned from me on my end with going through literacy. You know, I really, I want to get and will get the math curriculum review committee in front of the school committee more often. I think it's important that you hear from them early. I think it's important that you hear from them regarding the different programs and resources. And I know how important it is to the school committee from past evaluations that I've received that and feedback that there are a few different ideas and programs and things in front of the committees. They have a sense of you know, what else has been looked at and what else has been reviewed. So I'm looking.
Jason, I think that's important for the community as well. Because I think what happens is there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into this. But we see one product as an end result. And so the, you know, school committee or community members feel like, well, we were forced to do this one when there was a tremendous amount of work and effort. So I think to see some of that work and effort and understand the thinking about the why behind it all is very helpful. So I appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, and and I appreciate the feedback from the committee. I know the school committee gave me some feedback on that on a few different occasions and I had an opportunity to kind of tease some of that thinking out with Erin to kind of wrap our head around what could that, you know, that process look like. So so thanks for that. I think that's important. So we've got some ideas on how we can do that so that the school committee can hear from the curriculum, the math curriculum committee early and often about the work that they're doing. And then under instruction, you'll notice that the work that we continued last year is is kind of, we're picking it right up where we left it, so to speak. Not that it was necessarily ever left, but we are working now on year three focus school expectations. And Carrie Purcell is going to be joining us on the at the November 12th school committee meeting. And having a discussion with the school committee around our year three expectations and the work that she has has been doing and continues to do with our school based instructional leadership teams, our teachers and support staff and our coaches and principals. So we're really excited about that. Because you'll see that another piece of the goal is to implement this year a very narrowed and and kind of deeper focused school improvement plan and professional development plan. So if you recall, last year we went through a very, very lengthy process and principals really laid out a three year model of what this things, you know, what the improvement work was going to look like at each of the buildings. And what we have been working on this year is taking a very large and kind of meaty document and saying, okay, given the circumstances, given where we are, what are the two things or three things that we really need to be focused on in each area? Each of those are tethered back to the district and blue district blueprint for improvement and have very clear and measurable objectives and outcomes. So we're really excited to continue that work and to continue to work with our instructional focus in each building and our couple, two to three agreed upon best practices. And then developing all of the the PD that needs to go along with that. I think a big piece of the work that I'm probably most excited about is really captured in the second part, which is our data cycles. And all that means is teachers sitting together, looking at student work through a particular lens, talking about that student work and looking at the actual results and having very kind of focused conversations around how can we kind of teach different or better and or what should we keep doing to help get the outcomes we're getting? And these cycles happen in a continuous basis and they've already started. And so I'm really, really pleased that we'll be continuing that work. We will be using things like our STAR assessment and other common assessments like unit tests and projects to be doing that, but we'll also be looking at very kind of authentic and ongoing pieces of student work. Right? So the the idea for those folks watching at home is, you know, we deliver a particular product to our students. We use certain teaching strategies and we use certain materials and resources. And we set in certain expectations, but we have to analyze what is all that resulted as far as student learning. And so we have to take a real critical look and deep look at that student work to see if we're really getting the product that we need to. So we're really, really excited to be moving forward with that. And so it's a little bit about our curriculum and instruction focus for this year. Then we move forward to our district improvement goal on equity. And this has been and remains to be a very you know, frequently discussed topic across our school system. At, you know, from a from a kind of multitude of stakeholders, from students to faculty to parents and I know our school committee. And we've set some real kind of tight goals around this work as a district leadership team. We have made as a leadership team, two commitments to this work. The first is we need to create the space and the time to discuss equity at all of our at all of our leadership team meetings. And I'm I'm happy to say that we have had some very deep conversations as recent as Tuesday of this week around equity and what this looks like in our school system. But these conversations frankly started back in the spring. So creating the space and the time is the first, the first goal. The second goal is for us to hold each other accountable and not give each other an out when we're discussing topics that are not necessarily comfortable to talk about. But that we have to allow each other again, the space and the opportunity to have these conversations, but we also have to make sure that we're having them. We have to make sure that we continue to challenge our thinking. And, you know, I understand and I and I and I've had, especially having had many, many conversations of parents and staff in the past week or so. This issue feels like a sides issue. And I do want to just make sure to underscore that it's not. We not, we don't see it that way. Our leadership team and our school system does not see this as a sides issue. We see it more so as an opportunity to build a sense of perspective and to build a sense of empathy and to really work on that college and career readiness piece for our students to help broaden perspectives and horizons. And so, you know, I do want to say to the community, I understand that sometimes these conversations around equity cause some tension or some discomfort. I think we need to lean into that. And I think we need to do a lot of listening and a lot of of conferring and a lot of talking with each other to really help ensure that we're growing in the way that we need to in this particular area. So we will be doing some training. I know Matt has been hard at work on connecting with Maya, actually, and a few other groups to help put some some supports in place for us as we kind of wade through these waters and to make sure that we're doing our best work to really provide an equitable opportunity for all children across our school system. Because all means all, as we've said quite a few times. The next area for a focus for this year is in fiscal management. And I think as we look particularly at the first goal here, this looks familiar. This is our our typical budget development process that we go through as we enter into FY22 and the budget preparation for that, believe it or not. Matt and I have already started laying out the timeline for that. So that is underway in terms of putting together the roadmap that'll eventually lead us to a certified budget for FY22. But I do like to be remiss if we didn't put a goal for our current budget cycle because FY21 has been nothing but a bit of a wild card in terms of navigating this budget cycle, going all the way back from having the FY21 budget vote in the towns outside, you know, socially distanced and masked up and all those other things. It was a first to actually not even having a state budget. And preparing for a budget that we had certified by the towns, but actually didn't know what the state numbers were going to be. And operating on a potential reduction in state aid of 10%. To then looking at, well, how do we reopen with all of the provisions and staffing that we need to make sure we can get kids back in our classroom with all the additional expenses to dealing with a hurry up and wait situation to a certain extent with federal and state grants for COVID relief, for technology funding. And so it has been a bit of a wild ride, so to speak. But Matt has been really focused and working hard at putting together a document that we'll go into after this that will hopefully give both the committee and the community a very deep sense of where we are in our FY21 budget state. But I will tell you that it is going to remain unsettled. And I'm not saying that necessarily from the district perspective, from a management end, but as recent as, you know, yesterday and today, hearing a bit about the state budget as I'm sure everyone's heard, and the state may need to take some very broad and deep cuts to close the revenue gap, which we all knew was going to happen based on the projections that we were hearing. But this has probably been the piece from the operational and kind of fiscal side that has been most unnerving for me. Because, you know, again, it's one thing to kind of fly and build a plane in terms of programming and, you know, systems and structures. It's another thing to do that when, you know, the fiscal pieces, the gas in the plane. And you want to make sure you have enough gas to actually get to the landing strip. So I think that's been something that has probably caused more sleepless nights or anxiety for us. But so far, so good. We're in very good shape and Matt will walk us through that. But I thought it was very important to have a formal goal around that for this year to make sure it stays at the forefront. And lastly, our student learning goal. And, you know, this goal looks a little odd this year. It looks a little different. You'll see that it's anchored in STAR as our assessment. MCAS is still on the docket at the state level for all grades. For now, but I'm not sure what that's going to look like. And, you know, last spring, I think the committee was in a very tough situation in terms of evaluating our progress as a system and my performance as a superintendent, because we really couldn't do a student learning goal evaluation because it was anchored solely in MCAS. So I know it's a little bit of a of a of a risk on one hand because we have some kids that are fully at home. We have some kids that are partially at home. We have some kids that are all in our classrooms. We have masks and social distancing and partner teachers and all of these things that we've never had before. But I stand by the notion that we are here for teaching and learning. And so I felt very strongly that if we are doing the work right and we are putting the systems and structures in place and we're reflecting and we're adjusting and adapting our teaching and learning programs, I have to have a student learning goal for our school system. So what is before you this evening is a goal that outlines specifically the work as measured by STAR, because that is one assessment we can control. I didn't want to pick a measurement that that I didn't know if we would have it definitively in place or not, so that at the end of the school year, you know, the the committee can take a deep look at our results and really kind of determine, you know, how how I as superintendent and our leadership team and our system was able to move the needle on learning. And so we do have a goal in that for this for the school year. So let me pause there. I know that was kind of a lot to walk through, but I'm happy to address any concerns or questions. Jane, I think you're muted.
You can stop sharing. I'll be able to see everyone to see if they have questions.
Sorry about that.
Okay. No, that's okay. Tammy, are you?
Yes, please. I I not a not necessarily a question, just a comment on the curriculum goal. I very much appreciate the approach that was described today. I I think sort of two prong. One is I'm a firm believer that sometimes what we're doing is actually good stuff. And we don't necessarily have to scrap a a whole program when we when teachers feel that it's useful. I don't think we should just get a new one because the it's the other one is considered old. And and I think a lot of times with curriculum, when you use it consistently and I'm trying to think of the word Jason uses. I'll come to it. What is with fidelity? Yes, yes. With fidelity, a a lot of times it's just really a tweak. It's really just an addition, an addition to that can also be used with fidelity that reaches and helps, you know, children learn versus starting from scratch, which then leads to teachers, you know, having to learn. And then that takes how long to, you know, sometimes years to really master that curriculum. So I really appreciate the lens of let's really examine the strengths and weaknesses of our current program and then and then exploring other options because I I think that sometimes money is wasted in districts when we feel, when we scrap things, when when sometimes you just need a little addition. So thank you for that.
I just want to remind the committee of that phrase Tammy used, getting a new one when your current one is old, just for when I've been around for a while and, you know. It doesn't mean it's not working.
Just maybe it's so tweaking.
When you reach my age, we'll talk. And since you can never reach my age because I'll always be older, I think we're good. My concern, I have a concern that there's a lot that you just put out there. I mean, there's a lot. And given the the academic year that we are in, given the shift, change and adjust that we will likely have to do, I'm concerned that there's an awful lot on your plate, which I know some of it will fall to Jill and Matt and everybody else, but but I'm concerned about that. So I guess I don't have a recommendation of removing any because I think they're all critical and they're all tremendously important. But I think that we have to put a lens on this that says, remember the environment that we're in and that expectations, not that we want to lower them, because I don't think, I think we want to work towards better and best and then even better than best. But I am concerned that there's that there's a lot out there. And I know that there are additional things that aren't on there, like the capital planning that we need to do with our communities. We've promised the reports and the plans to go forward. So I know that there is a tremendous amount out there. What happens with the regional agreement will also come into play. If if that passes in in the second community. So I just want to caution everyone that that while commendable, this is this is a big bite of the apple. So please don't burn out. Erin?
Are you saying I gave him too much work to do?
I am saying you gave him too much work to do.
I really tried to make sure he didn't feel that way. So I want to point out that his professional practice goal is is it's encompassing our entire year and and the pandemic that we're in. So I also felt that way. And I tried to make him lighten up on some of the pressure he's putting on himself. With that being said, there are just so a few housekeeping items with the way we are running this cycle. Originally in the spring, when we were finishing his last cycle, we had opted to do a fall to fall because of MCAS. But now that we're not using MCAS as a measurement, we are still starting this a little bit later, but I think but I think we should move the cycle back to the end of the school year, because that's when STARs will be completed. So just for calendar purposes, Jason, I think, where would you be comfortable with the mid-cycle falling based on us starting this in October?
So we will have, so if we're looking at when we'll have our, like our mid-year data, it will be somewhere in January, early February. So we've done the mid-cycle, mid-March-ish, we probably could move it back one month.
Well, I don't know that we need to push it to the center of budget season either, but STARs is available for kids remotely?
Yes, everybody will be taking it. Yeah.
They don't have to be in the building. We also did, when I met with Jason, we talked about measurement. I know he didn't mention much of that, but I do have some very good notes about, you know, if, if anyone was going to question, like, how is this goal being measured? The only thing I wanted to ask Jason is if you wanted to share the, in your equity goal, you mentioned a book study. Would you like to share with the committee what the book is and what the administrators?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. So I think we maybe have mentioned it before, but we studied, read and studied this summer. And yeah, there you go, White Fragility. And so we're going to be focused on that text during the school year. And we've already had some really in-depth conversations around the, the main themes and topics and ideas in there, and we'll continue that as we move through the, the school year.
There you go, Tammy. We're doing our homework.
I do have extra copies if anybody else wants one.
It's a good book. It makes you think.
And then I would just like to mention too, and because I know we didn't specify it, but I kind of reached out to Jason after we were finished our three-hour power session on Monday. The, the last goal, the student learning goal, all students is all students. So I just want to make sure that that is, it's not being missed intentionally, that that is our entire population. So though it does not specify a separate goal like we have in the past for special that, they are included in this student learning goal with the STARs assessment. I just want to make sure everyone knows that they are in that goal specifically. And that is all I have to add for now.
Anyone else? Okay, we do have to approve these goals for the year. And so I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's goals as reviewed.
I'm moved.
Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy, although I think Sarah said something too, but I'm not sure. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the superintendent's goals, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, you have your work cut out for you, sir.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And like I said, tomorrow, I'll email them out to the community so that everybody has them and we'll post them on our website as well. Just quickly, before I hand it off to Karen for a health and safety update, I wanted to loop back to the grades four and five hybrid learning plan, because I know that at our last meeting, you know, when we were talking about what's working, what's not, we had identified that the grades four and five hybrid on the remote days needed work. And so please to share with the committee tonight and update all of you at home that are tuning in as well, that we did reset the four and five hybrid program. And so what we will be doing is actually assigning a kind of homeroom, as we normally would, class of students to each of the teachers in grades four and five. They're going to have their own classroom and they're actually going to be live streaming. So when our students are home, on, our hybrid students are home on remote days, they're going to just zoom into the class as if they were sitting in class and it's going to be the same teacher, teaching all the subject areas. It's just they'll be taking in the instruction and doing the learning and work from home. But they will be, for all intents and purposes, in school, just zooming in, and it will be the school day. One of the things I was really pleased about is, A, the teachers have just taken this head-on and they're doing the work anyway. But B, it's also laid out in our agreement that, you know, teachers will be available and working with students all day. And so we're really pleased about that in terms of how we framed that language, but even more excited, I mean, our teachers have, have really just kind of jumped into this. And so right now, Matt's hard at work with the principals and with Dan Saltzman, our, our tech lead, making sure that we have all of the hardware and all of the infrastructure we need to make sure that there's no issues there. They're looking at Wi-Fi and what we can do to strengthen that in some particular parts of both Millville Elementary and the complex. Both principals met with the parents last night in a Zoom meeting.
For those that had, for those that had power.
Oh, was there a power outage in the?
There were a lot. So, so the more information you can give tonight, I think the better.
Okay, if we need to rerun that Q and A too, we can do that. I didn't realize that. I'm glad you just said that. So yeah, so I guess for those that were able to participate, there was a question and answer session and the principals were able to explain what was going, you know, kind of going on with the reset. It actually will create a much better product for the student. For those that have kids that are students at the high school, it's going to feel like that. You're, you're literally zooming in or you're kind of in a Google Hangout in the classroom, the teacher's live streaming the instruction. And so that will be reset and start on October 19th. I thought it was the 13th, but it's actually going to be the week after. It's going to be the 19th. So they were able to go through all that information last night. So we're pleased that we, you know, we're, we're, again, we're just, we're looking at the models we have, we're taking the feedback, and if it's not working, we're trying to fix it.
And so, so for those families that were confused this morning, because they were getting pieces piecemeal, this will feel more like your student has their teacher, just like it used to be before the pandemic. So each, each student will be assigned to a class with a, with a teacher. There might be additional help, but, but with a teacher, whether they're home as the remote part of their hybrid or whether they're in person. And so the delay in starting is to allow those teachers to practice that joint live streaming, be in the class and be watching the monitors of the students at, at home as well. So it was the opportunity for parents, for teachers to practice and, and get ready and perfect, so that when they start on the 19th, your student will have his or her teacher that, and you will have a teacher that you know you can reach out to regardless of the subject for that grade level. Tammy?
Just to clarify, on the, is it, is it going to be every day is a new lesson? Because you have your whole class in front of you, it sort of will move forward differently, right? Okay.
Anyone else?
Say, I did tune in last night. There were like 27 participants, again, because of power outages, I think people were not able to be there. Mrs. Schaefer did send an email today too, with a little recap, not totally detailed, but some, oh, you know, good, good info. But yeah, I think like your, and question Tammy is that they can just run through what would normally be a school day is what it sounds like, so we don't have to just do ELA and math on those in-person days. You get everything every day. So, and then there's no, another that free time. So I think it'll be nice, personally.
And, you know, be eager to hear from the families about how it's, you know, how the reset is in terms of if it's meeting the, meeting the needs. We think it will, but.
May I bring up another sort of COVID-related teaching issue?
Sure.
Just to get clarification, because again, I do not have students, and I think this is happening at the middle school level. It was a very confusing conversation during the week. But is there a, is there a situation where there are 40 to 50 people, kids on one class, in one class? I, I think it, I was told it was a science class. Carrie, can you help me?
It's one of the seventh grade science classes, I believe they were saying, where she's teaching all of the team, remote kids that day. They're all in one block.
So the number was 40 or 50? And I do think that we talked about some situation where...
Forty.
Was that?
We did talk about up to 40, you know, about four, the, the whole entire home group, but...
And I just, and that was because of the, the sharing of, it was, is this because of the sharing of teachers between grades, Jason? Is that what causes this 40 people to come to one?
Yeah, so...
Because that's basically half the grade.
Yeah, so I checked, I actually spoke with Ms. Kurt about that when I heard of it. And she said, she didn't, you know, she said, I don't know where that's coming from. We don't have that many kids in a classroom. But she was speaking specifically about 50. So that was, I think, what the message was that had gotten back to her. She said there are, she said, there's no classroom that has anywhere near 50 kids. She said, in the classes, the virtual classes, remote classes that are larger, she has two adults in those, in that space to pull the kids into different groups. So I can get a specific number. I don't know if it's 40 or 38 or 41. I don't know where it is. I was asking her about the 50 students, because I had heard that too. But when we were discussing, to your question Tammy, that model was looking at, because you have the other half of the team that's home, right, on that given day, and they're rotating through their schedule, even though the schedule looks different than it does when they're in person, they're still meeting with the science teacher. So Ms. Kurt had shared that in situations where the classes are bigger, there are two teachers assigned to the virtual space to work with different groups. But I can definitely get clarity on that in terms of what the exact number is. And you said it was seventh grade science, but I...
So I guess I'm just wondering, if, if a seventh grade science teacher has 40 kids at one time, how are the, how are the remaining kids distributed in science? Does that science teacher only have two classes all day? Like, how, how, why is it a bottlenecking in science, in this science class?
So I'm not sure that it is. I have to find out if that is the case. And I say that respectfully, just I, I've, I've read and seen a lot of things floating around on social media that haven't necessarily been the case. So I need to delve into that a little bit and see if that is in fact the case. So I don't know if it's getting, if it's kind of bottlenecking or getting stuck there.
But we did, we did talk about, in the middle school in particular, when the kids were in school, they would be in their small, you know, 10, 15, 16 to a room, whatever it was. But then when they were home on their remote days, it was like the two sections, and I'm not going to say yellow or purple or gold, or because then I'm going to confuse people even more, but the two sections would be in science together. So they're not in science together five days a week. They're in science together, the two things together, because the one science teacher is doing her remote group, you know, the, the one day a week or two days a week that they might have science when they're remote. So it wasn't, it's, it's not 40 or whatever it is, 38, 28, it's not that. It should be about 32, because if they're 16, 16, 16, 16, then it should be 32 when they're remote. But they're doing different kinds of, you know, they're not doing the lab when they're remote. They're doing different kinds of, of information and async. But we did talk about how the two would come to one when they were remote.
And I, and I remember that conversation, Jane, but I'm so curious as to, they only mentioned science. So why doesn't that same thing happen for the math teacher, the English teacher, or the humanities or...
It, it should, but it may be that they were smaller, smaller groups to begin with. So if you have 12, then you just have 24 and maybe that doesn't, you know, maybe 38 feels like 50, but 24 doesn't. I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but...
The other thing I need to look at is the, there is a seven, eight, you remember having the seven, eight split team? So I, I don't know if that comes into play anywhere on that.
That was my guess, that it was a seven, eight split teacher situation. But I, I didn't, I don't, you know, I'm a very visual person, so I needed to see it to, to kind of talk about it. But I just wanted to put that on your radar and see if we can solve the mystery of what is actually happening.
Yeah, I can put it in the update tomorrow, if they can.
And Carrie, you look like you had something you wanted to, or clarification or something.
I will say, my daughter's in the class, so I've sat and watched it a few times. There's always been the teacher and another staff member monitoring the chat and answering questions and everything as they go through. But with this teacher, she's only doing remote. So like seventh grade science, they have a science teacher in school, and then they have this teacher on their home days. So she, I think, I believe she has seventh and eighth grade. So she might have, you know, one block with seventh purple, one block with seventh gold, one block with eighth purple, and one block eighth gold. So I think that's where we're seeing the numbers, but like I said, there are two staff members in there. So I haven't noticed much of a problem. Questions were being answered when I was watching it, so.
Carrie, have you noticed, and, and it might be hard to see, but could you tell the number of students that were in that section? Was it 50 kids? I mean, I...
Honestly, I didn't count. I was paying more attention to see how questions in the chat were being answered.
Sure, sure. I just have no offhand if you had that.
But you can go into the Google Classroom and see classmates. You can see anyone that's in that same Google Class. So they all have to be, are they all in the same Google Classroom, or do they each have one for their own cohort?
Well, that's if we go into Google Classroom and count, and if she has all of her students listed in the same.
You'll see them all.
You'll see them, the B R participants.
I'll find out. I, like I said, I, I spoke with Ms. Kurt and she reassured me there was, there were not 50 kids in a class, but, but there could be 40, it could be 41, it might be 38. I'm not entirely sure. But I can definitely find out and I can get to the why. And I can put it in the update for the committee tomorrow, so you have that in case folks are, are inquiring.
Good, thank you.
And I would just further that question, Jason, to ask, is it happening somewhere else? Because if it's not happening anywhere else, it seems like it should be avoidable.
Yep.
But if it's happening everywhere and we're just flagging one particular scenario, then maybe it's not as, you know, it's not fixable.
Or maybe it's not an issue in the first place.
But wasn't, if you're going off the social media stuff, Tammy, wasn't there meant to be like...
That's part of it, but then, I, you know, other people had, had texted me some information, so I was trying to put it together. But, but I do think that, you know, 40 people in one, one meeting is, is difficult regardless, right? I mean, it's why we don't have 40 kids in our, our classrooms regularly.
So Jason, have you been contacted or any administrators been contacted about it? Or was it on social media?
No, it was a social media post.
Because that, that also mentioned high school. So I got involved in that conversation because I was trying to explain to them that there are some Google Classrooms where the teachers did not split it by cohort, but the, all those kids are not ever in the class at the same time together. But I think it would be best if you got that information from your administrators and not everyone chiming in, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I said. I had a conversation with Ms. Kurt, but I'm, I'm happy to delve deeper into it. And Karen, you want to give us an update on the health and safety front?
Hi, everyone. Overall, I feel like we've been doing really well. People have been following protocols. There's been, recently, we had a little bit of an issue at the high school... Recently, we had a little bit of an issue at the high school with some mask breaks and kids not social distancing. That administration and myself have addressed. And hopefully will go smoother, I think now that they've been in for, you know. I think this is our fourth week that they're starting to get a little more comfortable and a little more lax. There's been a hundred and twenty-six students and staff that have either been dismissed.
Karen, can you speak up a little bit? It's just hard to hear, I'm sorry.
We'll pull this closer, hopefully that'll be better. There's been a hundred and twenty-six. Students and staff members that have either been dismissed or absent for covid reasons. Those include being symptomatic, travel, being a close contact. Or potential close contact, contact, or a sibling of a symptomatic student. We've had almost ninety-five percent of the students and staff that have needed testing. Have had it. And so that's good, and the grade with the biggest. Numbers of kids, it was, that have been absent is kindergarten. But that is to be expected, in my opinion, with those kids. In a normal year. They would at most be home a day and be back in school or not even absent. But because of what the rules with covid are, then they need to be out and tested. Typically, the testing is taking one to three days to get the results back. And, you know, so we're getting the results, we're getting the notes in, and we're getting them back into the classroom as soon as possible.
Anybody have any questions for Karen or? Go ahead, Jason.
Can I just clarify something, Karen, so you said a hundred and twenty-six kids had some type of symptom? Or they were a close contact or something, of that hundred and twenty-six, ninety-five percent were tested. And as the community knows, we've had one positive case in the system.
The hundred and twenty-six include students and staff that have been.
But we've only had one positive case.
And that positive case was not in the school. And had no school contacts. A minimum of forty-eight hours before they, or after they tested, whatever, before they tested positive. Is the rule, yeah.
Yep, the, the way it works is from the point you develop symptoms from that day, it goes back forty-eight hours. And so there were no, no close contacts of students or staff.
Yeah, and, and I would like the public to be, or I would like to be very clear to the public. That we will never release personal information about anyone that has tested positive for covid. And that is, that includes the school, that includes the, whether they're a student or a staff person. And I, I would kindly ask that rumors not get generated, because we will ensue with a mass panic. And we are, given the information we're, we're supposed to give, based on state guidelines and regulations. It's pretty much a scripted letter, so it will be very similar, should that happen, but it will, if you are contacted. If there will be a need, you would certainly know, and if not, I would ask for kindness, patience, and consideration. That we are telling you what we can tell you, what we legally can tell you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
I do have a question, Jane. Karen, is there any plan for? Just to, to make testing easier for students or staff, e- easier access in the state?
As far as.
Well, so if we're sending a child home and because of they have, they have a symptom, or so say a parent wakes up in the morning and their child. They feel their child has a symptom and they're not going to send them. Is there any easy access for students to get? An appointment for testing versus? Looking through the, the state sites that are available and finding an open slot?
A lot of them are contacting the healthcare provider, which they should. And some of the, those offices are arranging testing, whether it's at. A lab in their building, or some are going to Milford Regional. Others are having the testing done at CVS or Walgreens or an urgent care. For the most part, people are getting in for testing the day of. So it, there doesn't seem to be a big lag time between. The symptoms appearing and them being able to be tested.
All right, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Aronworth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
More on coronavirus. As it has been quite the topic, the first report that I have is coronavirus. Update on finances, I know that people have heard a lot about funding coming in from the state and the federal government. And us having lots of funds to use and trying to make sure that we are fully equipped to have the students back. And how we're going to keep them distanced, and how we're going to keep the, the classroom staffed. So Dr. DeFalco and I discussed that it would be helpful for us to put together. Overview of the different funding sources that we have from the Department of Ed. How it is that we're using those funds, and then show a little bit of what's been drawn down to date. What has been expended. And some future plans for contingency, so to speak. So to start, if you look at the top of the coronavirus budget sheet. You'll see the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, those were the funds that were, were released. Prior to July first, even, they were released during the summer. And they covered costs for getting things started up. So you can see that we have received from that grant one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars approximately. Of that money, we, we planned on spending about thirty thousand dollars on planning and running our. Recovery and return teams. We planned on spending approximately eighty-two thousand dollars on protective, personal protective equipment. And preparation materials and machinery. When I refer to the preparation materials and machinery, that, that implies the disinfectants. The materials needed to get the buildings up to stuff, plexiglass and misting machines. Hand electrostatic sprayers and the likes. The continuing activities and staff, twenty thousand dollars. Quite honestly, that funding is for maintaining, maintaining services and employment. So they were allowing districts to actually apply some of the funding just to maintain current costs. Of keeping people employed, and that's how we allocated that twenty thousand dollars. And there was ten thousand dollars with respect to school leadership resources for some of the summer training and continued training. On how the leadership at the building level and at the district level are going to navigate through all of these issues. So that's another piece of training that we've invested in. I, why don't I, I'll go through all of the different funding sources and then open it up to questions about any of them. So the next grant that you'll see on the list is the Remote Learning Technologies Essentials Grant. This is the grant that was put out specifically to try to make sure that we could allow all students equitable access to online learning. Which we've really been focused on, as you can see, that was a grant that we were awarded about eighty thousand dollars. We took about fourteen thousand dollars of that as planned on usage for the hotspots that we've ordered and have distributed. About sixteen of those hotspots are for the schools to use those outdoor learning spots. And the rest of those hotspots are distributed to individuals that in their home. Don't have access to quality internet service, or any internet service, I should say. You can see also the sixty-six thousand dollars from that grant that was allocated towards our Chromebook leases. So we were looking to go one-to-one. When we started talking about the budget for FY twenty-one, but with knowledge of this grant. And that allowed us to make sure that we were supporting our one-to-one initiative, so that students would be able to take the devices home. And it also expanded our initiative to the point where we now are able to go. The plan is to have everyone K through twelve be able to have access to devices in their home. So we were very lucky to get that grant, that was a, that was a grant that we had to write in for and explain the usage. But we were awarded it, and we're making sure that our students have access to online learning. The last grant, which is one of our larger grants, this is the two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. That people have heard about, is the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This is the grant that we actually started looking at, how are we going to make sure that we're getting kids back safely? And we can return to some form of regular instruction, whether it's a hybrid model or remote or full in person. For some of the students. As you can see, that required a significant amount of investment in additional faculty. This grant totaled approximately three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We allocated a large portion of it to assistant teachers. As you can see, we have eighteen assistant teachers. It should be noted that the numbers in the item amount on this grant are the numbers of people. It's not the number of FTEs, so to speak, or full-time employees. Because this grant in itself was only allowed to fund positions through December thirtieth. So these positions and these amounts that are allocated for each of these individuals. Are the money that it will cost us to start school, to continue this pattern of instruction through December thirtieth. And we'll talk a little bit more about that after, because as I'm sure is popping into many people's minds. What happens after, exactly. So as you can see. We have the eighteen assistant teachers that we were looking to spend approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars on. We did decide that we only were going to add an additional one counselor at this point in time. We, we looked at qualified candidates and the people, the person that we brought in. We're, we're putting the funding towards having that person provide more services. Than spreading the services a little more thin across multiple people. You can also see our nurses that we've added, one additional nurse staff for each building was the plan. And that was what we budgeted for in this coronavirus amount. So that was a total of about seventy-five thousand dollars. We also, as you were lucky enough to hear from Karen already, and I'm sure that everyone on the committee and many in the community already know. Karen's been a tremendous asset through this entire process, this grant has allowed us to fund. That position, so it's actually funding the ability to have the lead nurse by applying funds towards replacing that position at the high school level. You can also see the additional custodian costs are attributed to this grant. Approximately thirty-two thousand dollars for four part-time custodians, they're each working four hours a day. We put them in during the peak hours when students are in school, so that we could be cleaning the high-touch point surfaces. And helping with the disinfection of the lunch. Process and the bathrooms. You can see the two additional SROs that were added to our budget that were very helpful. They actually, one of the SROs left today from the complex. It was a heartwarming goodbye, everyone was sad to see Kevin go. But he's been a tremendous asset, as have the other officers. That was budgeted at ten thousand eighty dollars. We may actually have to make an adjustment to that expense at this point, we still have time to make amendments to the grants. But I'm not entire, entirely sure that we will end up spending that entire amount for SROs. So some of it may be allocated towards supplies. And the last you can see is the Boys and Girls Club Rental. We have an agreement with them to use the space for the time, and we've allocated those costs to this grant. So you can see on the drawn down at the bottom, we're nowhere near expending any of these funds just yet. We haven't drawn them down and we haven't applied all of the funds, but as we go through the next couple of months, you'll see those numbers changing dramatically. And to your point, Jane, another piece is, how do we continue this? So Dr. DeFalco and I have really looked at these numbers over and over again, and we've looked at. What are the costs that we need to continue as a starting point? So if you look at the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Those are the costs that are only budgeted through December thirtieth, and we, we're looking to see, if needed, how do we maintain this hybrid model? So if you look at that, the cost of three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars was for three point five months. Only three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of those costs are recurring. So if we do a little quick math, we were looking at the recurring costs being approximately. Ultimately ninety-two thousand eight fifty-seven. Per month, and at this point, after this grant expires, we would at most need to extend that cost. For an additional six months, so Dr. DeFalco and I, again, as I mentioned, have looked at this. And we would be needing approximately five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to support these services. Through the remainder of the year. We've done some deep looking at what our expenses are now. And we've identified a number of areas where we could have some savings. I'm not going to go into the specifics of all of them, but I will highlight a few of the higher level ones. So you may recall, we have the ELA curriculum that we budgeted for. But we also decided that we were going to allocate FY twenty funds for that, and that saved approximately a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Which right off the bat is a big chunk, we are receiving support from the towns, which we've discussed and are extremely. Grateful for, we'll be receiving approximately a hundred thousand dollars from the towns to support the assistant teacher positions. We have experienced some teacher salary savings from turnover that we've spoken about, you know, repeatedly. From fiscal year to fiscal year, this year, we're counting on a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars in savings. With respect to the turnover in, in faculty. Another pot is savings with respect to leadership, both leadership development that we. Prepaid from FY twenty funds, and also, as we had discussed earlier in the year, holding off on that associate principal position. So those are a few really high-level, high-level pieces. And we've already calculated that we can save approximately five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. From these areas that would be able to entirely offset the cost of running this program. For the duration of the school year, so.
Can I jump in quickly on that, just to help, so what you'll, what you heard Matt referring to is months. Looking at the actual months of work, I think what. I think what's important is to understand those are estimates, because we actually need to look at the days. Because these aren't salary positions. They get paid for the days they work. So if you look at the actual number of days, it actually, because of February vacation, April vacation, like, you know, they don't get paid for those days. So we actually will be going through and counting the specific days to calculate the, a little bit closer to what that exact amount will be. We did it as an estimate per month, which I think makes sense, but yeah.
So Matt, the hundred thousand dollars from the two towns, and I know Blackstone approved their portion at their meeting on Tuesday evening, so I thank them for doing that. Those teachers are included in these eighteen assistant teachers, or those teachers are the Boys and Girls Club teachers, and they're even separate from this?
They're in the number.
They're in the number. The eighteen include all of the assistant teaching positions that we've introduced.
Well, great.
Other questions about any of these grants or expenditures?
Is now a bad time to ask about our sub-line? I'm just curious, are we saving in there? Because we don't have day-to-days? Or have we added subs that, is that going to have any factor on our line item?
It's an excellent question, and when we go through the expenditure review, we can actually see, I certainly, at this point in the academic year, given all of the uncertainties that we're still facing. I don't want to commit to anything, but you can actually see in the expenditure review, which we'll get to shortly, there are some savings in the substitute teaching line. So it looks actually like almost, right now, there's almost forty thousand dollars that we're saying we may still have available in those funds. Again, when we look at the expenditure review, though, there are some areas where we're going to need to redirect those funds too as well. But it's an excellent point, Erin. So yes, there definitely, I would assume there will be savings in the substitute line.
So in addition to that, I just wanted to ask, and maybe it's too soon to tell, I think I realized today that today was only the seventh day that my high schoolers were going to school in the building. But my question is, the extra nurses that we hired, are we finding that that is very helpful? I would assume, even if the answer is yes right now, we're not even in flu season yet, so I'm just wondering, are we glad we did that? Or are we finding the nurse's office isn't as busy as we had projected? Maybe Karen would want to.
I was gonna say, Karen can definitely weigh in on that, but from a financial perspective, I do know they've been a pretty good investment.
I wanted to hear that, too, so yes.
Yeah, it's, there's less numbers, but they're extremely busy. They're going through and calling every student who's absent. They're following up on kids that are, have been out to see where things are in this process, as well as dealing with, you know, kids that are feeling well at school, have medications, you know, they're very busy. And plus, then the LPNs are helping out at the Boys and Girls Club as far as check-in, check-out, and giving meds there. I don't know what we would be doing without them.
Well, and part of, you know, I expected that that would be the answer, but part of the reason for having the second one was to address any case or issue, because you can't have a nurse who is dealing with somebody who have symptoms be the same nurse who gives somebody a Kleenex for whatever reason. So part of the reason for the two was just simply because we had to isolate into different rooms at different times, given different situations. So that may happen once, that may never happen, you know, knock on wood, may never happen. But if it did, we needed to have them quick, ready, and available, not, you know, where are you and run twenty minutes to get over here kind of thing. So part of that was logistics more than necessity, but I'm glad the necessity is is clear.
With the medical waiting room, there does need to be a person monitoring the students. And so anyone who is symptomatic goes into the medical waiting room until the parents can get the student. So yes, you're right, there does need to be, you know, so if, you know, the nurse was tied up in the medical waiting room and there were medications, it makes it.
Yeah, can't be two places at one time.
And I think the tracking and the tracing of things, you know, as Karen was saying, following up and calling the homes and seeing why kids are out, and I just think that level of follow-up and follow-throughs, it's really important. I'm really glad that the LPNs are on board.
Glad to hear that. Then one other question about the SROs, Matt. The we had budgeted for the extra time at the beginning, I assume more for traffic flow and outdoor safety. We have the tents, I'm going to be the tent girl. So without them, where are we going to stand with that type of? Or is everyone getting, is more comfortable with the flow of the day, I guess, is my question.
I would say I can speak to that. The patterns that have been established, and the parents have been very cooperative. You know, the biggest thing about opening in this type of a year is all of the change can be overwhelming. And, you know, moving to different exits and entry points and changing traffic patterns. The SROs have been extremely helpful. They've been great, even welcoming the kids and getting to know the kids right from the start, which helped making the kids feel more comfortable returning to the district, which I thought was a tremendous benefit. But again, to your point, a lot of the patterns have now been established, and I don't think that it would be necessary to keep them engaged for the remainder of the year. I don't, if we were to foresee specific problems, we do still have our two SROs that work with the district, and we would engage them in whatever conversations are necessary.
Matt, can I just add to that, too? I think it would be helpful for the committee to hear some of this, too. But, you know, the response from our towns has been remarkable. And so, you know, day one, Chief Landry was up at Millville Elementary, working with the principal and the SRO, and actually, additional, he had additional folks there to help restructure that drop-off procedure and help to, you know, come up with a different kind of traffic flow. Just Tuesday night, I got an email from a mother in Blackstone who was really concerned about the construction project, the paving project near Mendon Street, right where the complex is. And I had emailed the town administrator. Truly, at nine forty-five, he called back. He had two officers there in the morning, and there's a plan to paint the crosswalks that need to be there. They're going to add those to help make sure that the child gets to school safely from that side of the street. And have heard from Chief Gilmore as well. I just, you know, I can't say enough about how folks have just pulled together to help make sure we can get this done. So just, you know, even back to, we reopened the buildings, walking each of the buildings with the Board of Health. I mean, you know, they showed up, they walked through, they asked their questions, and we're just really appreciative of that. That's, you know, the response from the community's been good.
Yeah. And I guess I would like people to remember my comments when we first talked about having a police presence in the building. It was to do exactly what these gentlemen did, particularly in the elementary schools, was just to, you know, we talk about equity, and we talk about, you know, all kinds of different things. Well, getting to work with your police officers, getting to know them as people, getting to understand them, getting to be comfortable with them, getting them to show you a turtle that they found on the side of the road, that's really important for our students. They need to have those relationships. And when they're eighteen and when they're twenty, or maybe causing a little bit of trouble, and, you know, and blame shows up, it's like, oh, I know you, you know, I know you. You're not the bad guy. You're, you know, you were somebody who was very good to me, will be very good to me, and will talk to me. And so those relationships are as important as any other relationships that we're building. And so it wasn't always just to direct traffic or to say, put your mask back on. It was to build relationships, and I think that that has happened, and I hope that continues to happen.
Jane, I'm glad you said that, because I met with Chief Gilmore last Friday and asked him if there were any resources they could provide for us, either from his office or the DA's office on the equity work we're doing. You know, they have a lot of resources that are out there. I'm super glad you said that. I just think that's a really important piece. Tammy?
I have a question. Have, you know, as we go forward, obviously, the Boys and Girls Club is a perk beyond the free, appropriate public education scope. And is, if, obviously, it's serving a tremendous purpose for our families, but it does go above and beyond what we're doing in general for all kids. And so have we considered potentially charging families for that service? Or having the Boys and Girls Club charge for that part of that to offset some of the costs to allow it to run further?
So we currently have thirty kids, students that are participating. We've got two groups of fifteen. And each week, we're expanding the numbers. You know, we started smaller, and we keep kind of building and building to that, to continue to build that model out. I think one of the things, and I've had the opportunity to be there first thing in the morning and check the students in and talk to the families, or in the afternoon, Matt and I have been there a few times to sign them out. I will say that, you know, the families have been incredibly grateful to have an option so they can go to work. You know, sometimes, it's actually not even the parent that's dropping or picking up, it's the grandparent or neighbor. A couple of times, we've seen some neighbors that, you know, the parents have asked if they could do that. And, you know, I feel like you're right, you know, Tammy, about the level of service that it is. But I think it's important to, you know, stick with the model that we have. I would hate to see parents not be able to go to work or already be, you know, financially strapped because they have, you know, they have to pay a fee or what have you, you know, for that. So we haven't considered that, but.
I think my concern is that, you know, if maintaining that means that we have to cut something that is applying to our eighteen hundred kids in our district to serve thirty-two families, I guess that's part of my concern. You know, I do get it. I mean, you know, I think each case has to be looked at. But, you know, there are other families who are paying childcare, et cetera, et cetera, in this situation. And for, I just want to make sure we're not cutting line items that we really need to go above and beyond and cut what's basic necessity in the district of two thousand.
So the cost for the space is, that Matt's laid out in the grant, is for the year. We're paying it out of the grant, the grant that Matt just reviewed by December, but it actually covers through June. It covers the whole year. So, and the towns have committed to supporting us in that work through their CARES money, so we're using that money to help cover the cost of the tutors. So we won't have to cut from, you know, another line to pay that.
Okay, thank you for that.
More seats, so parents, if you're listening, because we're going through our waitlist, week after week. And we have parents who are saying, you know, no, we're all set, you know, I've set something up, you know, something else up, my grandma's here or what have you, you know, mother's here, that kind of thing. So if there are parents watching, just send me an email if they're interested, because we have seats, so we're still working through our waitlist.
Matt, would you like to move on?
Certainly. The next report that we have is the revenue report. With respect to the general revenues of the district, everything is running smoothly. We've been collecting our revenues in a timely fashion. Everything is coming in as expected from the state level. Chapter seventy is coming in, our assessments have been coming in. We've started drawing down our grants. The only point worth noting in our revenue is we still have yet to identify what we will be receiving with respect to regional transportation reimbursement and Circuit Breaker. Those are really the two question marks right now. And the amounts have not been released yet, and no allocations have been dispersed for those funds. They are expecting that that's going to happen shortly. I've heard Dr. DeFalco mention that we're hoping to see a state budget earlier than January. I heard that at the latest, it would be January. I think we are keeping our fingers crossed for possibly the end of the month. We're shortly thereafter. And I think once that information is released, they'll have a better idea of where those reimbursements are going to stand. So it's the regional transportation and the Circuit Breaker reimbursement. But I will say that a lot of our funding from Circuit Breaker, because it's a reimbursement, we would still be using significant amount of funds from last year's Circuit Breaker reimbursement for this year. So if we were to see a decrease, it shouldn't really halt any of our special education services or cause any alarm to how we budgeted for this year. So we should still be okay. But otherwise, as I mentioned, the revenues are coming in as expected. We're grateful for that. Are there any questions about any of the specific revenue sources?
Tammy, go ahead.
I have a question. Can I, Matt, to go back to the last COVID expense slide, did we receive all of our Chromebooks that we have leased? Everything's in and distributed?
We have.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Not a problem. The next report that you have is the expenditure review. Again, things are going as expected with regards to our expenditures. We are on budget for essentially everything. You will see some spots where.
Why do I sound weird?
You're okay, Jack. Did you want to say something?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was, my thing keeps cutting out and rejoining randomly. So I don't, what's getting across from me?
Was I sounding weird, Jack? Could just be what I'm talking about.
No, it's just my computer's being weird for some reason. A lot of stuff's coming through garbled.
Okay. So as I was saying, there are some areas where you can see in the current available balance line, there's large numbers. As we move through the course of the year, those numbers are not necessarily going to remain as high as you're seeing them right now. Particularly with respect to the staffing, we do have some staffing positions that we are in the process of filling. So while we're providing all the services, we still have some permanent positions that we're looking to fill. Again, there's also a couple of areas where you will see, like in the twenty-four-ten, the textbooks line, you'll see significant savings there. That's one of those savings that I referenced will be potentially used to maintain the costs of the COVID plan for the remainder of the year.
Athletics line is, are we, at some point, and I feel like we've talked about this, so I apologize, but gonna look at reducing, since competitions were reduced, transportation probably reduced for competition, reducing the fee that families pay?
Yeah. Yeah. So what you're seeing there also, that's a great, it's a great point, especially when you're looking at these numbers because you'll see current available balance.
Right.
Um, the stipended positions have not necessarily been appointed yet. So when those positions haven't been appointed, the funds aren't encumbered. So that's right now where you'll see some significant available balances. To your question, yes, we have discussed that, um, if there's a shortened season, uh, charges for the students will be prorated and accordingly, the stipends that are given to the coaches would be prorated. But that's not going to be reflected right now in the.
Right.
Expenditure sheet. That's probably going to be one of those touch and go areas because we still don't know what's happening with that new session for, you know, for.
Fall two, fall two in February.
Exactly. That being said, a lot of the, a lot of the runnings of the programs come from those collected fees. So not an area of significant concern where I would be thinking, wow, we're going to go into the red if we decide to run these programs. I think we're in a decent, we're in a decent place. Um, as I mentioned to the athletics, the new athletics director, um, we also did have some money saved in those funds from last year where things got cut short. So with respect to some requests of, uh, could we potentially run a shuttle? Or could we make sure that we're affording these, uh, services or, or sports or equipment? We're in a decent place. Um, because those funds were collected last year, they still need to be spent on, on those particular items because they're, they're specific revolving funds. So I'm pretty confident that we'll be in a good place. The, one of the ones that you will see, you know, seems like we're a little over custodial services. There are also some areas that are in these expenditures that we started expending from July. And I haven't fully identified some expenditures that we may be trying to offset with FEMA reimbursements. That being said, those reimbursements are not going to come in prior to the end of this fiscal year. So I don't want to become reliant upon them to make things run for this year. But some of those numbers will change as, as, um, they get allocated to like a FEMA, a FEMA grant. So. Are there questions regarding any of the major expenditure lines? Great.
No.
That being said, we have our personnel report just to be filed and to be kept on record for the committee. Which brings me to our facilities report. As you can see, I, I put first and foremost the HVAC, um, the district-wide work that's been done. I put this on there because I know as you, as you actually touched upon in the beginning of the meeting, this was a concern for everyone regarding our return. And I wanted to show some of the work that has been done. Um, district-wide, all of the union events and the air exchanges have been modified to allow for the maximum flow of fresh air. All buildings have received air quality testing from a third-party contractor. And as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, that positive results means everything is good. Everything was in normal range and there were no concerns regarding the air quality assessments. Um, repair and testing reports have been already provided to the union. Um, and the ductwork cleaning has been done in all buildings. It hasn't been completed at the high school. It has been started. And just to give a little bit of a idea of what we're looking at when we are going into the ductwork, um, that first image that you see there is the, is one of the main lines at the high school. That is over a foot worth of dirt and dust accumulated debris in the ductwork. If you look at the JFK line before, you can see all of the accumulated dust and debris in that, in that ductwork. And you could see how spotless it is after. I didn't have the after picture in the tru, in the, uh, trunk at the high school. I actually did have them, but it was a little, I didn't want it to be misleading because the, the perspective of the clean trunk at the high school didn't actually match what the tube looked like because there were some connecting tubes, but they were all bright and shiny and very clean. But I didn't put them in because I didn't want anyone saying, hey, wait a second, are you showing us a different duct? Just because the perspective was a little off. But that JFK line gives a really good example of what type of work is being done and how clean we're getting these, uh, HVAC systems. I don't know that they've ever been cleaned before, quite frankly. So this has been a big undertaking and it's going to make a tremendous difference in the, in the air quality in the district. Another piece that we obviously will touch upon with respect to facilities is the boiler project at Millville. Things are going well right now. Um, I know that there have been questions regarding why is the tank still sitting in the, in the back? Um, there were some delays that were discussed at other meetings. Um, mainly the delays were due to the paper, to a paperwork error. What ended up happening was the design team had a certain, uh, set of designs for the anchoring system approved for the permits. But the contractors had an original design for the anchoring system and it wasn't the exact specifics that were permitted. So we needed to sort through that. That took a bit of time. Everything is back on track. The tank is currently in the ground and all of the anchors are on their way to being, uh, fully anchored in to the, to the tank. I mentioned to Dr. DeFalco the other day, I was driving in and, um, I was on the main road going up to, to the middle, to, I'm sorry, Millville Elementary, and there was this tremendous truck. And I was thinking, why is this thing stopped on the side of the road in Millville? And it's going nowhere and traffic is at a dead halt. And then as cars started passing the truck that was trying to make this tremendous left turn, I realized it was the dead man for our tank and I was grateful and I said, okay, I, I'm okay with the wait.
What was my response to that, Mr. Aronworth?
I believe, uh, Doc DeFalco laughed at me and, uh, was there something else? Maybe I'm.
Yeah, there was. I said, if that tank doesn't get in the ground, there's going to be more than just cement dead men in there.
Oh, I was, I was thinking that was going to be it. They won't be the only dead men around.
That was, and Matt.
Subconsciously, I, I, I may have blocked that out during that text exchange. I was thinking that typically I would be a part of that massive bodies. I just laughed and, and went to the simple office. But everything, as I said, the work has started again. The anchors are there. They were delivered. And we are anticipating that all of the groundwork covering up the tank and getting everything back in order should be done by the end of October. I do want to be clear, that's not the aesthetic work that will be, probably take longer than expected because we're not in the springtime anymore and we're getting into to a point of the fall season where it may or may not make sense to plant grass on, on the top to, to have it, just need to be planted again in the spring. I know Christina's still pushing for turf, so those will be parts of the conversations as well. What you will see, uh, that is going to be, that is going to be in the area very soon are two one-thousand gallon tanks that are going to be above ground. We will make sure that there is heat in place in event that not everything is working and we haven't had the opportunity to run tests prior to October fifteenth. We wanted to ensure that there will be temporary heating in place for the fifteenth because at that point, we're expecting things will start to drop down and it's going to get a little chilly. Which I didn't even realize is around the corner. But.
It's next week?
Yeah, it's next week. You did mention the capital planning project. Uh, things are going as planned with respect to them, to that project. Um, I wrote in this report that it was temporarily reprioritized. That's not to say that it hasn't been going on. Um, we have been back in touch with the, with the design company that did this project with us, DRA. They've said that the, the, um, initial reports are complete. What they'd like to do is now get those reports to administration and potentially to the school committee and see what we'd like to do with respect to them finally analyzing the reports before we, um, make them public. And then we're going to determine next steps. We do have them slated to come to the school committee meeting in December. So it is still anticipated that all of the work will be completed and those reports will be discussed and presented to the school committee, uh, by December.
So, so just so you know, we have received a request from the Millville Capital Planning Committee for requests to move forward that would need to move forward for this, uh, next fiscal year. Um, and their deadline is November fourth. So, um, I don't know if we need to reach out to their planning committee and just say, you know, here's where we are. Um, or if we do know there are things we absolutely have to do next year, uh, we need to, to, um,
Yep.
Fill out their forms.
Yep, I did see that and it's an excellent point, Jane. I think the next step with regards to that is reaching out to DRA and really seeing if there are high priority areas that they've identified, even in the show report that we say we need to move full steam ahead with this prior to anything else. And make sure that that does get on to the capital planning, um, committee's agenda for this year. I'm not sure that there is anything that they're that worried about. So again, I haven't really reviewed the reports with them. But that will be something that I do within the next, within the next week. I'll reach out to them, see if there's really intense areas that they want to identify. And then we'll discuss, Dr. DeFalco and I will discuss that probably. We bring that information to the committee and we can see where we want to go from there. And that concludes the facilities report. Everything else has been done.
All right, Matt. That's tough.
Been quite a, it's been quite a bus for facilities.
It has been. You've been on top of it. So that's greatly, greatly appreciated because that was quite the yeoman's job, all the, all the different buildings and COVID issues. Um, any other questions that anybody has for Matt? Okay. Uh, school committee forum, does anybody have any things they would like to bring forward? Okay. Sarah? Go ahead. Oh, no. Aaron, did you?
Um, yes, I do. I just wanted to, um, speak towards the letter that went out to the community last night in regards to the positive case. And I know you already, um, touched on this, Jane, um, and on it being a form letter. Um, I think there could be a little more information in there and I just, I, I, I don't think we should ever identify a person or even the, whether it's a student or staff. Um, but I think as a community, knowing the building is, is going to be important as times go on. Um, and I, I just want to leave it at that, basically as a statement to, to say that sharing that extra piece of information, um, could calm anxiety. I realize it could work the opposite direction too and add to some anxiety, but I think, I think we could have had a little more information in the communication last night.
Tammy, you have something?
Uh, just to Aaron's question, is there guidance that comes from the state that tells us what we should know, what we should release and what we shouldn't?
There's, there's essentially.
There's a lot of guidance on everything else. I'm assuming they tell you that part.
So there's essentially a form letter and you fill in the blank, you fill in the blank. And, and I will tell you, um, having seen some from two other districts, two completely different, one in Massachusetts and one in Rhode Island, but another one in Massachusetts, uh, you could put one letter on top of the other letter. They, they're just.
Uh, I received a similar correspondence from BBT as well.
Yeah.
With, with a case.
Yeah. Yeah.
But in, in BBT's case, there's only one building. So I think because we're a district and I think the community it's addressed to makes a difference.
Well, one of the letters I saw was the district with multiple buildings and again, looked exactly like the same. And, and maybe that's something to go back to the state to and say, you know, what, what do we do when we have multiple buildings? You know, but as far as what the district is doing, we're following the guidelines. Carrie, go ahead.
If it's a staff or student that's full remote, does the letter still go out to the community?
I'm not entirely sure we would even be made aware.
Yeah.
You know, if, 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 my sense is no, because the child wouldn't be, or nor the staff, if the staff is teaching from home, wouldn't be in contact with anybody physically, you know? So I wouldn't even think, I don't think Karen, I mean, you can weigh in, but I don't think we'd even know if they didn't tell us.
Yeah, there, there have been a few families that have told us that their child has been symptomatic and that they were getting tested. But they're not in the building. There's not going to be any close contacts. So it's one of those things, it, it's nice to have the information, but it wouldn't be anything that would need to go out to the community.
Anyone else on that or other topics? Okay. Tammy?
I, I just want to say thank you to, to everyone who's working this school year in our district. Um, we are, there are bumps in the road. We don't deny that. And we are, have been very transparent in, in those bumps and, and trying to smooth them out. Um, but our teachers are in our buildings. Our students are in our buildings and we need to continue to be thankful for that. Because, um, I think, you know, we're, we're at a point where people are sort of nitpicking some smaller things. But the reality is there are a whole lot of districts in our, in the Commonwealth who all of their staff and all of their students are still at home. So I am very thankful and grateful to our teachers, our parents, you know, every, every single person that's working together to keep our kids in, um, in, in focusing on teaching and learning. Um, and so I, I can't, I don't think, I think we should say that every time we meet, we meet because um, I think we're doing an amazing job and it is so many components. And Jason and I were talking about this the other day, like literally every little thing that comes up, there's six layers to solve and answer questions to. And so when people think that they, that there, it's just this one thing, it, it explodes for some reason, twenty-twenty, just, it explodes into eight other different little fires that you have to put out. And all of our staff, including our administration, are, are working together to just keep that going, putting out those fires while our students are getting a, an education. And so I, as a teacher, as a parent and as a school committee member, cannot thank people enough for continuing to process. Um, when you get up in the morning and you know, okay, what's going to happen today? But you keep coming to work and kids keep learning. So I am so thankful to be part of that.
I will. Go ahead, Karen. Sure. You have to sneak in though because we can hardly hear you.
If I could just say something off of what Tammy said, um, in letting some of our local, um, doctors offices know our, our protocols. The one doctor that I spoke with, he had very high praise for us bringing back K through three full time. He's like, you are the only district that I'm aware of that has those kids back in school full time. So I just wanted to pass that on that people are recognizing that.
Yep. Yeah. I think the cooperation that we have seen, the commitment to go above and beyond is, is something extraordinary. I mean, it really truly is. The, the teachers that are live streaming their classes. You know, when the first word was, oh no, we can't do that. It's just, it's, it's amazing, the work. And I hope that everybody has the stamina to maintain it as we go through, because I don't think we've seen the first nor last nor end of this. But, um, I, I hope everybody's getting, you know, we talk about social emotional for our students. We need social emotional for all of us as well. And so I hope people are finding their time to, to do what makes them happy. Visit the, watch a sunset or sunrise or run or have dinner with your family or whatever the case may be. But, um, find some normal in the abnormal because we're in this for the long haul and, and it's going to be a long haul, I think, I think unfortunately. Um, and to that effect, um, our next meeting is October 22nd. We, um, I have decided that that meeting will be a workshop. It will be in person um, at the, um, middle school. Um, it won't include a public forum. If we have some business to do, we certainly will conduct it. But, um, mostly it's just for us to regroup and talk about what our goals are for the year, what our committee assignments. Um, you know, where we want to go with, um, what people want to focus on for this year. We've undertaken some, some pretty big things and hopefully they're coming to a close and we need to refocus and, and think about where uh, we can best serve the people in this community as school committee members and our commitment and review our protocols. We have a new member. So, um, she has an opportunity to have a voice in that, you know, what the expectations are of being a school committee member. So we're going to spend some, some time on the 22nd, uh, at six o'clock, uh, doing that. And if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And what time is our workshop?
Six o'clock.
Thank you. So moved. Did you just ask to adjourn?
Thank you, Tammy. Is there a second? You can just raise your hand and I'll, I'll, I'll take it from there. Aaron, okay. Thank you, Aaron. All those in favor, say aye or turn off your, your video. Either way.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. So moved and, uh, thank you all very much and see you on the 22nd.
Good night.